Evening everyone, it's seven o'clock. It's time to call the order of tonight's city council meeting for September 10th, 2018. Call please.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Browning?
Here.
Mr. Rohr?
Here.
Mr. Hellinger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Mayor Riggle?
Motion to, Mr. Mayor Riggle. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hellinger. Who is the second?
Mr. Rohr.
Call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the implication given tonight by Captain Mark Larrett. I ask you all to please rise and stay standing for the next meeting.
Let us take a moment to quiet our hearts at this time. As we gather together in this room, let's lift up prayerful concern for the mayor during this time of concern for her mothers down in Florida. God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the systems of governance that you have entrusted us with. We thank you for the choices that you give us that allow us to work for the betterment of this community. Help us to be good listeners who desire to see the best in others. Guide us to be the leaders that the people in Delaware need. Father, we ask that you renew in us your strength and peace as we begin this time tonight. Instill within us the joy of helping to build a community that is beneficial to all. We humbly ask these things. Amen.
Amen.
With the blessings of the United States of America and the free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, Captain Larrett. Item number four is approval of the motion summary of the city council meeting until the 27th, 2018.
I move for approval.
Second. Motion by Mr. Keller. Second by Mr. Jones. Call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Item number five is the consent agenda. Please.
Item A, acceptance of the motion summary of the Shade Tree Commission meeting held on June 26, 2018, as recorded and transcribed. Item B, acceptance of the motion summary of the Planning Commission meeting held on August 1st, 2018, as recorded and transcribed. Item C, acceptance of the motion summary of the Civil Service Commission meeting held on June 6, 2018, as recorded and transcribed. Item D, resolution number 18-51, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor for tax year 2018, budget year 2019. Item E, resolution number 18-52, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a cooperation agreement with Delaware County for the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of US 23 and Glen Parkway, Peachwood Road. Item F, established September 24th, 2018, at 7:30 PM, has a date and time for a public hearing and second reading for ordinance number 18-81. An ordinance amended section 917.05 with the Delaware Codified Ordnances, modifying industrial pre-treatment limits for silver and mercury. And item G, established September 24th, 2018, at 7:45 PM, has a date and time for a public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 18-84. An ordinance for Mystic Golf and Games LLC for approval of a conditional use permit request for Mystic Golf and Games at 11:59 Columbus Pike within the Delaware Square Shopping Center in Zone B3, Community Business District.
Thank you. What is the wish of council regarding the consent agenda?
Move for passage of the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Mr. Browning. Second by Mr. Rohr. Call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Item six is time for letters, petitions, and public comments for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. So, does anyone here talk about anything that is not on our agenda tonight? Seeing none, we move to committee reports. Mr. Jones?
I have none.
Mrs. Keller?
I have none.
I have none.
Rohr?
I have none.
Nothing.
I have none as well. We have two presentations tonight. The first is one recognizing Dr. Awareness Week and Mr. Mark Clack and General Andrew Gompont. Report please. Whereas the city of Delaware has the responsibility to recognize implications of outstanding significance, and whereas diaper need, the condition of not having the sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry, can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families. And whereas national surveys report that one in three mothers experiences diaper need at some time, while the children are less than three years of age, and 48% of families are rate changing their diaper to extend their supply. And whereas the average infant or toddler requires an average of at least 50 diaper changes per week over three years. And whereas there are no government assistance programs for the purchase or provision of diapers, and a monthly supply of diapers can cost as much as 6% for a full-time minimum wage for your salary. And whereas Delaware's property home to Gompont and we can manufacture a private label diaper, and various community organizations have recognized the importance of diapers, and also help provide economic stability and support to families throughout various channels. Now, I, on behalf of Mayor Carol K. Riggle of the City of Delaware, can hereby proclaim the week of September 24 through September 30 as Diaper Need Awareness Week in the City of Delaware, and encourage the citizens to donate generously to diaper banks, drives, and those organizations that the street diaper community needs to help eliminate diaper needs for our citizens.
We make diapers right here in Delaware. We hired about 300 people that live and their families there, up there right off of Highway 42. We made about $1.3 billion products last year, and, you know, we're, we also give about $8 billion products a year to the local diaper banks. So, I just wanted to encourage everyone to participate. Thank you very much.
Correct.
Is it appropriate to ask you to announce with your vote?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Our second resolution recognizes national preparedness. Whereas national preparedness creates a significant opportunity for every citizen in the City of Delaware to learn about ways to prepare for all types of emergencies, from potential terrorist attacks to natural disasters. And whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every American. And whereas all Americans could take a few simple steps, getting a kit, making an appointment, being informed, in order to make sense of preparing is a priority in every community. And whereas the United States Department of Homeland Security and other federal, state, and local officials and private sector are working to deter, prevent, and respond to all types of emergencies. And whereas these activities, along with attacking the American community, contribute to a level of national preparedness that is critical to secure the homeland. And whereas we observe national preparedness, when disasters happen, prepare now, learn how. I urge all adults and children to participate in citizen preparedness activities such as organizing disaster supply kits, reviewing insurance policies, and to learn legislative skills. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Carol K. Riggle of the Mayor of the City of Delaware, will hereby proclaim September 20, 2018, as national preparedness. And I call upon the people of the City of Delaware to recognize the importance of preparing for all types of emergencies, and to celebrate its life with appropriate events, activities, and preparedness. Chief? Thank you. That what I have in this meeting this weekend?
We did. And that was one of the things I really wanted to highlight, that the department directors that are here could stand up. We're very fortunate to have a great team here, and through each one of them, our city managers and city managers, we're very fortunate to do the planning that we do, respond to the incidents, and ultimately recovery, and that ultimately helps us our resiliency as far as a community. So, I appreciate that, and certainly appreciate all the resources.
We wish it all to you all good too. Thank you very much. Glad we got, I guess we might have been.
Let's keep eyeing the other one.
Item number nine. Is that it?
Not yet.
Okay. I think we read items 10, 11, 12.
Ordinance number 18-70, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a rezoning amendment for the Seattle House Apartments, 240 units, on approximately 24.212 acres, from R6 multifamily residential district and B3 community business district to R6 and B3 PMU, planned mixed-use overlay district, and located on the north side of US 3637 in the south side of Bowtown Road, just east of the Chesron Auto Storage Lot. Ordinance number 18-71, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a conditional use permit allowing the placement of a PMU, planned mixed-use overlay district, to be established for the Seattle House Apartments for 240 units on approximately 24.212 acres, and located on the north side of US 3637 in the south side of Bowtown Road, just east of the Chesron Auto Storage Lot. An ordinance number 18-72, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a preliminary development plan for the Seattle House Apartments, 240 units, on approximately 24.212 acres, Zone R6 and B3 PMU, multifamily residential district and community business district with a planned mixed-use overlay district, and located on the north side of US 3637 in the south side of Bowtown Road, just east of the Chesron Auto Storage Lot.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, I don't have anything to add from the presentation in public hearing last time, except to just make sure that you all received the letter of support via email today for this project and the High Point project. And then I think the applicant may have some additional presentation to make this evening.
As per usual. Good evening. Have you served everyone?
Steve Cutler, 94 North Sandusky Street, Delaware, Ohio. On behalf of the applicant.
Joe Thomas, Metro Development, 470 Old Worthington Road, Westerville, Ohio, 43082.
So, if I may, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of council, good to see you again. Thanks for making time for us again. Just a couple notes, just some of the issues that came up, just wanted the opportunity to respond from last meeting. Again, on the Seattle House here in front of us, right, staff, we worked very closely with staff. Staff recommended this, obviously with the various conditions which we are fine with. Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this. Obviously, you heard two weeks ago, the outpouring of the business community support. Obviously, another letter from one of Delaware City's large employers, JAGGS. Also, wanted to make sure, I'll pass this around when I'm done, the Morph C Columbus 2020 study, specifically talking about the need for more multifamily, of course, of which Delaware City is a member of both of those. And then the various benefits we've listed out. Again, we addressed some of those. I want to point out again is the income tax increase that you're going to see from that, the $4 million of fees, impact fees, et cetera, that you're going to see in addition to the road network. Obviously, the economic development impact, it's going to open up that Nutter Farms area and area behind Chesround. Obviously, that's why Chesround obviously supports that. It's going to bring economic development and help commercial growth spur that in that Nutter Farms area, which is critical. And one thing I think is important to note, having worked for many, many months, how many months have we worked with staff? Yeah, since March with Mr. Efflin, fantastic staff. We came up with the idea of this PUD, working with staff, because it is, it's existing, the zoning exists today for multifamily, up to 10 dwelling units an acre. And we had come up with some renderings, what the existing zoning would look like if you actually just did it under existing zoning. And at the appropriate time, you know, we'd like to show those to you. But by working closely with staff, we came up with this PUD so you maximize a better-looking product, better setbacks, better buffering, and ultimately, a better product that actually has amenities. And Mr. Efflin did a good job of going back and forth with those.
You want that over?
Yeah, if you want to show that up real quick. I just wanted to show you the comparison. If we, again, it's zoned now. So, we'd have minimal amenities, excuse me, Joe, you could probably talk to this. And then we would be pushing out multifamily right on 3637. Again, I don't think anybody really wants that right there, but again, if the desire is to just use the existing zoning, that's what we could do. But again, applaud the staff for working with them to come up with a good product. Joe, if you got anything?
To kind of clarify or to expound upon this plan was, we simply took what was the existing zoning. So, all you see here would be simply two-story buildings. And being in that, it was two-story buildings. Like I mentioned last time, we would have to use more of the footprint of the entire site to able to do that density with this type of product. So, essentially, with going from a three-story to a two-story building, we expand the actual footprint of the overall building footprints, the parking areas. We get closer to the neighbors, to our boundaries of the north, southeast, and west, and that in creation, you know, lessens that buffer. With the straight zonings of what's existing out there on this particular zoning, we would not be required to do all the different, I mean, minus some small amount of buffering, but as committed earlier, we would do 10-foot high mounds with 10-foot perimeter in the perimeter yard area, and plant, you know, more trees along our north, east, and west boundary to buffer us from the existing neighbors. So, essentially, we would use up a lot of open space by doing this type of plan, and we'd also have less neighborhood buffering on our plan itself as part of the existing zoning. So, this was just the kind of layout there, showing you what can happen with the previous zoning, and just living up to that previous commitment. And we're trying to do a PUD plan in order to give us greater open space, more amenities, and more buffers to our existing neighbors. Thank you.
Questions or comments? This is not a public hearing, as I understand, there were some other people that wanted to speak. You heard this?
Yeah, I think so. Vice Mayor, yeah, I got some calls last week after this ran in the business first, and I told them to come to a council meeting. Sorry about that.
So, my name is Sharik Siddiq, and my former address is 61 Southeast Sandusky Street. So, it's pretty pretty Owo. And so, my current address is actually 2709 Natalia Drive, Columbus, Ohio, 43232. I am a graduate of actually Ohio, but I'm a graduate in 2017. I was on a student of the government, and I was also the football equipment manager for actually four years. So, the reason why I am here is because I really, I love Delaware County. But when I speak, I speak for everyone because we, because we wanted to stay in a bit of that honor, and we actually wanted to also like work here as well. Like, a lot of my friends were actually raised in like Delaware County, and actually they wanted to stay here after we had graduated. But there isn't really a housing option, and it's, and it's actually very hard for a student who's just graduated from a big college, who has almost $60,000 in debt to buy a house, either in actually like Wesley Woods, or to buy a house in that to be Lotus Herb. So, I actually moved back to Columbus. So, I moved back to Columbus, and I moved with my mom, who's actually here. And a lot of my friends who were actually Delaware native, they actually moved to Dublin and to Albany. And that's a lot of talent that's actually leaving Delaware County, and it's going to like other counties. And I think that the housing, that the housing situation could really help the students stay here so they could get back and they could, they could, so they could invest their time, their energy, and then they could also like give back. So, this is why I am here to ask you to be both yes, to allow future Owo grads to be stay and to be, to invest here. Thank you. Wow, this seems much more intimidating, almost, but it's like, that's what happened. Thank you, folks. Thank you. I was like, wow, I was like, I was like, hi, how are you guys? I was like, who's next? Hi. Thank you, guys. Do you guys have any big questions for me? Thank you.
I live at 1509 Bowtown Road, right across from this here project here. I don't want to sit on my front porch and see a three-story building across from my house. I'd rather see a two-story, but I think this three-story stuff is a little bit too much for the east side. There's nothing around that's three stories, and I see them putting this up, and then it's all of a sudden, there's nobody to live in these things. So, they're all over the rent so that there's going to be worse people living in this. And I don't want it in my neighborhood. I imagine you wouldn't want it in your neighborhood either. So, I think this is, it'll be a mistake for Delaware City. So, and I just got another question. Where's this buffer going along Bowtown Road?
So, we've already presented all that information. If you want to get that information, we can make that available to you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? I've been asked to potentially give this initial time for the chairman when he comes back, is everybody okay with that? And also, the other thing, I mentioned to Tom, is the idea of mitigating some of the traffic concerns, the possibility of looking for support we can do on this project, non-school tip, which generates some money to the point, so in case we can get some input on possibly doing that between now and then.
Yeah, we can follow up on that request.
Okay, we'll go back and pick up item number nine, which is a public hearing. Your name, would you be ready?
Ordinance number 18-77, an ordinance determining that the petition for the establishment of the Terra Alta Community Authority applies as to form and substance with the requirements of Section 349.03 of the Ohio Revised Code, and to fix a date and place for a public hearing on that petition and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, in the timely advance consideration of the petition of the developer to enable the city to receive the full benefit of the proposed development.
This is a follow-up to previous meetings the city council's had in regards to the establishment of a new community authority on the Terra Alta Project. And the site, this evening's ordinance before you resets the public hearing, a new public hearing for October 8th, and the ordinance that you would be acting on tonight just determines that the current petition which you've received is sufficient, and our opinion it is. This does not authorize the establishment of a particular millage at a certain rate. That would happen after the public hearing. And to that end, the developer submitted last week in response to a meeting that Dave Efflin and I had, a revised request regarding what they're seeking from the city, and we are in the process of reviewing that now, getting comment back from directors, and then I'll have, I'll have something to report to you before the public hearing on the 8th. Mr. Ballard, our acting city attorney tonight, can speak to any of the issue with the hearing tonight. You really just open it and close it. I don't know if there's anybody here for that, but if there are, then speak, I guess.
Chris, do you have anything to add?
No, Tom summarized it pretty well. The issue right here is just simply the sufficiency of the petition itself, so.
At this point, we'll open the public hearing, and listen to some speakers. Come on.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council. David Fisher, Kephart Fisher, here on behalf of the developer and applicant and the petitioner. I've got a full complement with me here tonight, a man whom you recognize, including Jim Olin that represents the developer group, Mike Shade, part of the legal team, Steve Cutler, part of the legal team, and Greg Stipe, part of the legal team. So, if you have any legal questions, I think we've got enough people here to cover them for you. We don't have a lot to share with you, other than to confirm what Mr. Homan said and what your council said in terms of the reason for this petition tonight. We continue to work with Mr. Homan and Mr. Efflin and staff to address issues. We did put a revised request in, and we suggested, Mr. Homan, we get together in the next week or two and go through that again. These are conversations that have been held for the last couple of years with staff as we've moved this project through. We'd appreciate your consideration of this matter tonight in terms of its emergency to move us forward, to get us to the October hearing. Happy to answer other questions you might have.
Questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
We should acknowledge receipt, Mr. Shade did submit, I believe, to council, some follow-up responses.
Michael Shade, attorney of law here in Delaware, is host of this Fox 438. I didn't want to take a lot of time tonight. I apologize for the lateness in this, but schedules are scheduled, and if you have any questions or concerns, I would urge you to read, pay particular attention to chapter 349. It is extremely broad. Things that were raised as cost, things like that, it's broader than the applicant's requesting. There is a lot of information in that, in that chapter, and it's very technical, but it's there to aid primarily developers. The city can be a developer in the definition of the code, but what I would urge you to do is go through these materials. If you have any questions, I sent you all an email with my phone number. You can give me a call, or Steve, or Dave, or anybody with the team, and we'll answer them. And if there's any technical questions, you can get Craig Stipe a call, because he knows better than anybody.
Anyone else wish to speak on this? If not, we will close the public hearing. What's the wish of council?
I am making motion to, the rules requiring for three readings on ordinance 1877.
Is it third reading?
Yeah. I'm making motion to suspend the rules requiring, I mean, the doctrine of bridge calls. See that on there?
Is there a second? Second. Okay, a motion by Mr. Jones. Second by Mr. Ballard. Call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Excuse me. Sorry.
I move for approval of ordinance 1877.
Second. Motion by Mr. Jones. Second by Mr. Browning. Call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Motion passed. I'll land, can you read items 13, 14, and 15?
Ordinance number 18-73, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a rezoning amendment for the High Point Place Apartments, 160 units, on approximately 16.70 acres, from R6 multifamily residential district to R6 PMU, multifamily residential with a planned mixed-use overlay district, and located on the north side of Bowtown Road, just west of Village Gate Apartments. Ordinance number 18-74, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a conditional use permit allowing the placement of a PMU, planned mixed-use overlay district, to be established for the High Point Place Apartments of 160 units, on approximately 16.70 acres, and located on the north side of Bowtown Road, just west of Village Gate Apartments. An ordinance number 18-75, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a preliminary development plan for the High Point Place Apartments, 160 units, on approximately 16.70 acres, and R6 PMU, multifamily residential with a planned mixed-use overlay district, and located on the north side of Bowtown Road, just west of Village Gate Apartments.
Vice Mayor, members of council, I have nothing to add from the presentation, public hearing last time, but again, I think the applicant may have some additional remarks on this development as well.
Good to see you again.
Members of council, Vice Mayor, good to see you again. Thank you for your time. Steve Cutler, 94 North Sandusky Street, Delaware, Ohio, on behalf of the applicant.
Joe Thomas, Metro Development, 470 Old Worthington Road, Westerville, 43082. Thank you.
Again, just some of the, to address some of the issues that were raised at the last meeting, I'm not going to reiterate everything, some of the similar things remain in terms of the business community support for this, obviously JAGGS, CHES Round, as well as the Chamber of Commerce. The MORPC Columbus 2020 report is the same, obviously is germane for this as well. And obviously, the benefits, some of the issue of benefits was brought up at the last meeting. Some of those, obviously, the income tax to the city is great, the property taxes are great, there's obviously nothing on that ground now. But just to run through specifically on the High Point Development, $646,000 in a sanitary capacity charge, $678,000 on a water tap fee, $170,000 for impact fees, $36,000 on other municipal fees. Obviously, the road itself, the Ferguson Drive, which Ferguson Road, brought a lot of discussion last meeting, that is a cost of $615,000. Again, we worked very closely with staff on doing this PUD. It's zoned for multifamily now, already, and we did come up with a rendering of what existing zoning would look like. Obviously, you can see that green space is minimized, as well as the developer would be forced to take out the standard trees in the back. And so we thought by working with staff, which obviously recommends this, we're maximizing green space in the application before you, as at the same time is preserving the trees and shade trees in the back, which are substantial, which is a substantial part of this development. One thing I would bring up is on the road itself, again, Ferguson brought up a lot of discussion, as well as Bowtown. At some point in time, Mr. Prino, as part of the city's thoroughfare plan, which is a fantastic thoroughfare plan, he's one of the best city engineers in the state, obviously Ferguson is to ultimately connect as part of a east-side interconnection of roads. One idea that I'd bounced out to him, as well as to some others, is rather than construct, requiring the construction of Ferguson Road, require the applicant to dedicate the needed right-of-way for it in the future, and then the funds that would be used to construct Ferguson could be used as the city would deem fit for Bowtown, 521, The Point, what have you. And I think, obviously, the non-school tip discussion would be, is applicable here as well. So obviously, the applicant here, Metro Development, obviously doing its fair share of trying to contribute to improve the situation out there. Joe, you have anything to add?
Appreciate your time, but I have nothing to add at this time. Steve was very thorough. Thank you.
Just trying to be quick. Any questions for? Yep. Again, as before, this is not a public hearing, but there's someone here that has not been telling us before, and is something different to add, and entertaining this time.
Dave, would you mind just pulling back, if you can, an image that would show the existing Ferguson, and then where this connection? I'm just trying to get an orientation of the larger, as Steve just described there. So Ferguson's on the thoroughfare plan?
Yes.
To go all the way through, to connect?
Yes.
Okay.
Ferguson connects through to here. This is the beginning of Ferguson. It was supposed to come through Village Gate Phase 2, which never was built, and on into the back portion of this property, and then down to Bowtown Road.
Okay, so their connection is the new piece?
Their connection would, sorry, their connection would be the first start of Ferguson Road, built down here, and then their portion of right-of-way and a contribution towards the construction of it in the back, as the case sits before council today.
Okay, thanks.
Again, we've been asked to move this to staff and the applicants, if I'm only prepared on the back of the room, is it okay with that? So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you read item 16, please?
Resolution number 18-50, a resolution adopting the 2019-2023 five-year capital improvement program, CIP.
This will be going to another reading. We're in the process of revising the CIP to get you a document that has page numbers and has the recommended, some of the recommended changes that we have. We'll get that out to you in advance of the meeting on the 24th, so you have time to review it. You have a public hearing, not a public hearing, you have a work session scheduled for the first, and then adoption of the plan on the 8th. There aren't a lot of changes, but we thought it was easier just to give you one clean document with the, with what we're proposing. So we're working on that now. So that's all on that.
When do you expect we'll have that?
I was hoping to have it before the next meeting packet goes out, so you'd have it for the 24th. I know my staff has asked me if I could have it out the next day and a half, before Thursday. You can try to do that, but what I don't want to do is give you another version and have, let me have it sent out again. And I know that you're going, you'll be back when?
On the 21st?
Yeah. So the goal would be to have it, a clean version, that would go out with the next council packet. So that would be that Thursday, that Wednesday or Thursday. The 20, the 18?
20 is Thursday.
So the 19th and the 20th, when we send out the...
Is that a work session at 6:00, 6:30?
Well, it's really a few guys, because the last one was at 6:00.
Yeah. And if you decide on the 24th that there's, that the changes don't amount to a whole lot, and you don't have any other additional changes, you don't have to elect not to meet them at first, if you choose. There's not a whole lot there, it's just a matter of getting those to you and...
Item 17, please.
Ordinance number 18-80, an ordinance accepting the annexation of 221.34, 341 plus or minus acres of land, more or less, description and map are attached hereto as exhibits A and B for the annexation known as the Central Ohio Boy Scouts of America Camp Lazarus annexation by Michael R. Shade, agent for the petitioners.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, this is the last step in the formal annexation process of Camp Lazarus, the Boy Scout camp, as we all refer to it. It's outlined here on the screen for a location map. You do have a more detailed survey, which I have here, but can't really see anything, in your packet. This would need to be acted on by council by November 1st, or by the Ohio Revised Code, it would be deemed not approved. That means your last meeting, a regular meeting to act on it, would be October 22nd, and that's the date I think we and the applicant are aiming toward. There would be a companion piece of legislation that we'll be bringing forward at your next council meeting for introduction. We'll dovetail in timing for that October 22nd meeting, but the companion piece is related to Section 549.08 of the city's codes, relative to the small shooting range that's here, and the restriction to not shoot guns in the city. That range's been here for a long, long time, and the idea would be between myself, the city attorney, and the police chief to make that as narrowly tailored a change to that section as we possibly can, and make it work with an overlay district such as this, which is obviously a pretty unique piece of property, pretty unique use, and pre-existing as well. So we'll bring that forward at your next meeting. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from Mr. Brown?
If you have any questions, I would indicate to you that approximately 152 acres of the 221 acres, again, Michael Shade, Attorney at Law, Delaware, Ohio, post office box 438, 152 acres of this land is under conservation easement, will forever be limited in its use and development. Basically, the development areas are already kind of there, and will stay in that area. There may be some additional buildings that take place over, you know, the next number of years, but it is not, it is not a plan to do overall development to the area. I would also indicate, based on Dave's comment, we have been working very closely with Dave, the police department, in talking about the language for the changes dealing with the shooting range. The shooting range is there to train young scouts in weapons, to help them earn their merit badges, and the whole experience is designed around that to, to make young men and women understand, you know, how scouting can be good for their lives. And so it's a, it's a, it's a process. I would also indicate to you, the other heavily treed area, we are not going to be bringing in Chapman Road. Chapman Road will stay out at this point in time, primarily based on comments back from your engineer, that that would be the only roadway that they would have to maintain, and that would be a lot of stuff to move around to do that. So that's staying out. This goes to the middle of the river, but that's not going to be brought in at this point. And all that land on both sides is in the conservation easement. So it's, it's, you know, it is what it is, you know, from an historic standpoint, this property was given by members of Lazarus family a number of years ago. The property on the corner of Winter Road, the large treed area is Seymour Woods. That's part of the Seymour family of Lori Sater Seymour Hees that gave land, and that is now a state park. That is not in the traditional sense, they're keeping it in a fairly primitive state, but they're starting to think about doing things with it. So it, the area's gonna stay, you're gonna have a nice big green area there to look at for a long, long time. And it's, you know, this came about, the request came about as a result of the need to have sewer and water connections. It's, the, to do the run in the county would have been over $4 million. That's just raw cost. We don't know what you get into in the bedrock, this whole area, at the lower end towards the river is all bedrock. So that could add significantly to the cost. There were no objections to the annexation by any government.
Mike, you said that the annexation goes halfway into the river?
No, the, the land goes halfway to the river. They own to the middle of the river, the Boy Scouts.
Okay.
But we're not bringing in all the land, we're stopping about 30 to 40 feet within the right-of-way of that roadway. It's 30 feet on center, so it's 60-foot ride from roadway. We stayed out of that because the, the city engineer's recommendation that that would be a very difficult thing to manage at this point in time. It's not to prevent annexation of that land in the future, is if the city takes control of a great portion of that roadway as growth and development take place, that may occur. But right now, it just didn't make economic sense for anyone.
Okay.
No, there's unlimited vehicle access into that area, mostly for their own maintenance and care facilities.
Any questions from Mr. Shade?
Thank you.
Dave, there's a time straight on, that's right. We can definitely time you on this.
No, I think the applicant is intending on making a zoning application as well. Due to the timing here, we anticipate that there would be a hearing before planning commission, but that will not dovetail with that October 22nd meeting, that will come to you afterwards, and that's just the way the calendar works at this particular time. So I think you can take this to another reading, and that would be fine.
Thank you. Do you read item 18, please?
Ordinance number 18-81, an ordinance amending Section 917.05 of the Delaware Codified Ordinance of Modifying Industrial Pretreatment Limits for Silver and Mercury.
Vice Mayor, members of council, what you have before you is a proposition from utilities to amend ordinance 91705D. This is effectively lowering the discharge limits allowable of silver and mercury from our industrial permit users. We have five users in the city who are permitted and bimonthly sampled to see their outgoing. This is a result of us renewing our permit with the EPA at the wastewater plant. Every, every five years when we renew our permit, we have to do a technical justification of the plant. Basically, what we are showing with this technical justification is, when, when certain amounts of chemicals are coming into the plant, how much can we effectively remove, and what is going into the river? Through that technical justification, as well as sampling of what is coming in to the plant from just random spots throughout the city, residential users, what's coming from the houses, things we can't regulate per se as closely, it has shown that our limits for silver and mercury need to come down just a little bit. This is, does not affect any of our current permit holders, none of them are anywhere close to it. I can, I had these made today, I can give these to you, these are their last year's worth of samples. This isn't going to affect any of them at the moment. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to...
So more stringent, less stringent?
They are, they are both more stringent.
So the proposition is to make it more stringent?
Correct.
Based on?
Based on the technical justification of what our plant can handle, and what is already coming into the plant. And this has been run through the EPA, the EPA approves with the proposition that these should be lowered just for the well-being of what is going out into the river, not that we are putting anything out that we shouldn't be, we are not in violation, this is just a safety net or safe measure to take, so.
Do we have a public hearing on this in the fourth quarter?
Yes. Yep.
Do you read item 19, please?
Ordinance number 18-82, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat request by Medrock LLC for Willowbrook Retail Phase 2 on approximately 3.324 acre zone, V4 PUD, general business district with a planned unit development district, and located on the south side of US 36 and on the west side of South Health Road.
Vice Mayor, members of council, this case is as read by the clerk, it is for final subdivision plat. This is the area that we all refer to as the Willowbrook Retail, it's part of the large Willowbrook planned unit development. You'll recall, several years ago, this portion of the development went through an update of the PUD text, and also went through subsequently a first subdivision, which created the two lots here and here, and then you can see some remnant pieces around there. But this lot was to be built on by Huntington Bank, and that project just never subsequently came forward. Our understanding is that's been purchased back by the developer in this case. But it is part of a large PUD, and aerial photograph probably shows it the best. This is a private package road, 36, this is the right-out-only road. The lot they're seeking to subdivide now would encompass this area here, would clean up kind of the remnant pieces. And we did, through the process, understand from the surveyor that the right-of-way for US 36 has already been dedicated over, so that's been cleaned up, even though it doesn't look like it on the auditor's map here. The auditor's map's just wrong in that case. The lot complies with all minimum requirements of the Willowbrook Retail text as amended. Your planning commission did recommend unanimous approval at their September 5th meeting. As we do as staff, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, I will say that I do think that subsequent to this action, should you approve it, there will be preliminary and final development plans that come forward for medical office building on this site.
Questions from Mr. Brown? Is all the jury, you want? Result of your hearing, you are.
Good, how are you? Good. R. James Abatino, fifteen East Glen Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, I'm here on behalf of the developer. Thank you for having me. I think Mr. Eflin explained everything pretty well, so I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Questions?
And also on that point, since this is a pretty simple one-lot subdivision, I would also like to request, since we'll be back here within the end of the year with a site plan with our clients, I'd like to request an emergency, declare an emergency and waive future hearings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's your counsel when that finishes tonight? I'd make a motion to suspend those requirements, three readings on ordinance eighteen eighty-two. Motion by Mr. Jones, second one, Mr. Rohr, roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes. Make a motion for approval of ordinance eighteen eighty-two. Second. Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Rohr, roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes, motion passed.
Ordinance number eighteen dash eighty-three. An ordinance approving an amended final development plan request by SourcePoint for a parking lot expansion on approximately eleven point four one acre zone POI, Planned Office Institutional District, and located at eight hundred Cheshire Road.
Mr. Eflin?
Vice Mayor, members of council, read that a little faster than I could get ready. She's good, she's all, she's very good. This is for an amended final development plan for SourcePoint. They do have an approved final development plan on file, which resulted in the construction that you see on site. The site is located Glen Parkway and Cheshire Road. It is a planned office institutional. Here's an aerial photograph, should we need it, but you can see the, the building and the outline of the parking areas on the aerial photograph. I've changed the north direction on you here, north is to the left of this diagram. The spaces outlined in blue are the approximately sixty-one parking spaces that SourcePoint wishes to add and/or change over in the case of adding some additional handicap parking spaces, essentially in front of their front door, their primary front door, they have several doors to the facility. But when, when there are celebrations and there are other things, and it's a multi-use building going on, they have found a distinct need for additional parking on this site. There are a few trees along Glen Parkway that have to be basically relocated to allow for this project, and they're accounting for that on this site plan. Your planning commission recommends approval seven oh at their September meeting, we do as staff as well. This would bring the total parking spaces on site to two hundred and twenty-five. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? What's your counsel on ordinance eighteen eighty-three? Make a motion to suspend those requirements, three readings on ordinance eighteen eighty-three.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mrs. Keller, roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes, motion passes. If you please read item twenty-one.
Ordinance number eighteen dash eighty-four. An ordinance for Mystic Golf and Games LLC for approval of a conditional use permit request for Mystic Golf and Games at eleven fifty-nine Columbus Pike within the Delaware Square Shopping Center in Zone B three, Community Business District.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, this is the first reading, you set the public hearing for your next meeting earlier this evening, so we'll present it.
And could you read out number twenty-two, please?
Ordinance number eighteen dash eighty-five. An ordinance amending the Management Professional Technical Confidential and Supervisory Employee Pay Plan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight, before you see consideration of this ordinance, just to give you a little background, we have had some, we had a retirement in our Planning Community Development Code Enforcement area, and, you know, it was one of our inspectors, and we've had a history, as other building departments have had, of not being able to locate people to fill these positions, mostly because of the high requirements established by Ohio in order to be a building inspector. You essentially have to work for about eighteen months full-time and not be able to sign off on any plans. There are not many cities that can afford to have a building inspector shadow another building inspector. So this is something that we've been facing along with a lot of our colleagues, and one of the ways to try to, to address this situation is to increase our wages that we pay to encourage people to come here and work for us, and showing them that we, we will actually pay them more than some of cities of, or not pay them more, but be more competitive than cities in the surrounding area. Therefore, we are putting before you the consideration of this ordinance to change the management pay plan, to make the building inspector, excuse me, become an M nine, and then we also have a building inspector two. It gives the people an opportunity, it gives staff an opportunity as they increase their skills to be able to continue to grow within our system as well, so, which is something that's lacking now. And I think Dave Eflin might have a few comments.
All right, thank you, summarized it very well, Jackie. I would say that we've gone through at least the, most of the hiring process, and the three final candidates, all were in a salary range that we're recommending here, and that is pretty typical of what we're seeing around the region, for the reasons that Jackie explained. You simply have a high demand for a very high-skill job and a very low supply. This is nothing that we didn't anticipate, obviously, we have some older employees in the department, and Paul Stendering was a great inspector by my count, best I could figure, he probably inspected about a third of our housing stock in our community over time he was here, so that's the level that we're trying to replace within the organization, and do all the kinds of customer service that our inspectors perform every day. So this will help us get to that point. We do have a final candidate who I'd say would be very good, but money and salaries.
The, what's the, you said, what, M nine?
Yeah, an M nine as a building inspector one, and then an M thirteen would be a building inspector two.
What are they at now?
Um.
They're M eight?
They're M eight, there's just one, and so this would give them an opportunity.
Was there, was there a salary study done for this, like there was for the current position currently going on?
Sure, there is a salary study we have done, we've been looking at this for years, and it has been a problem that we've been dealing with. We didn't choose to do a salary study, DAS didn't choose to do a salary study, because we have been dealing with this for so long, we knew this was going to become an issue. We've been, Lori Diaz in DAS did do a short study, she compared about ten different central Ohio area plus the state of Ohio, and I'm happy to share those rates with you if you would like to have those.
Much appreciated.
Sure, I'll absolutely forward that to you, but like I said, they're all comparable to where we're looking at putting the, these folks now.
Council member, if it helps, we did look at positions around the state that are applicable, and our final candidate of choice would actually be taking a slight pay cut even under this proposal to come to the city of Delaware, so I think we're still getting value for that position in that regard.
This is one of the more difficult positions to recruit for. We normally have between fifty to, fifty to a hundred people apply for different positions, depending on the positions, we only had six. They're just, to become a building inspector is really, really challenging, and cities just don't have the extra money to have them shadow for such a long period of time. So this is what people are doing, we, and so Lori did go through about ten different air, local areas, and this will be right in the ballpark.
Any other questions?
It's first reading tonight, so just for your considerations, follow-up.
I'll send that to you, I'll send it out to everybody, Lori's email.
Couple of items, just another reminder that the focus on the future workshops begin this Thursday night at Willis and continue the week after next. There'll also be a presence at the Delaware County Fair, I believe, beginning on Saturday, and so I know Lee's been getting a lot of that information out, and if you could get it out on your social media platforms, Twitter, Facebook, Nextdoor, the more input we have from the residents on this, the better, so that's item one. Item two.
I'm sorry, also on that note, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Also, if you had the opportunity, I know some of you will be out of town, but if you had the opportunity to attend one of those sessions, they are facilitated, and so I think you would benefit by seeing the process, but also hearing some of the comments and, and participating. So I would encourage you to, to do that, if you can.
Secondly, there was a dedication of the city's first piece of public art, which was a collaborative of Gallery Twenty-Two, the Arts Castle, and city staff, and my thanks to Dave, his staff, and Bill and others who were involved in that project that was unveiled on Friday night as part of First Friday. If you haven't seen it, it's a very, it's a nice piece of sculpture that Mac Worthington did, will be there for, I think it's a temporary, but that'll probably, probably be replaced with something else, but hopefully that will be the start of more public art. And on that note, I received an email last week from Erin Fletcher, she's the director of the Ross Museum, she was here a few months ago seeking near endorsement of a grant that she's applied for, and it looks fairly promising that they're gonna get that, so I have a meeting with her later this week to talk about the next step in that process. At our Central Ohio Mayors and Managers Meeting last week, we had a very interesting discussion about the bag, something that the city of Arlington is dealing with in others, so I will try to get some additional information from them. The president of their council said they're split right now as to whether to, to not re, to eliminate it and just not allow it to be delivered versus allowing it to be delivered. There was a plea by, I think, somebody from the Columbus Dispatch about the drivers, and that this is their means of earning a living, and just be, you know, just be, think about that as you think about regulating that. Not necessarily what we were looking at doing, we were just looking at making it, I think, more orderly. So I'll get a little more information on that. And Democratic, not Democratic gubernatorial nominee, Richard Cordray spoke, he was invited, as was Mr. DeWine. Mr. Cordray spoke, talked about the Local Government Fund, and is committed to seeing that it be restored, and I believe Mr. DeWine has a similar position as well. So that was good, that was good to hear, but at least there's some discussion about the Local Government Fund and the fact that half of it was taken from communities back in two thousand and seven. So that's my report. I will not be at the next meeting, I'll be at my ICNA conference. Jackie will be here as acting city manager.
Those are comments, Mr. Jones? I have two quick ones, I think the other day we received a report back from the Assistant Prosecutor about the massage parlor conversation. I'd like to make sure everyone has a chance to read that before the next meetings, I'd like to have a discussion about it, this is a follow-up on that, so. And the vice mayor asked about that TIF study for, can we, should we get that like prior to the weekend before the?
Yes.
As opposed to the, the meeting or something?
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Your sister-city delegation will be traveling to Baumholder on Wednesday. The delegation is currently Mr. Rand Ebert, myself, and Carolyn, if it's possible for her to attend, due to the situation with her mom, she may need to miss this trip, but we're all praying for her and hoping that things go well. I also wanted to give kudos to all of the city staff and especially our safety services for their hard work with the weekend storm and making some difficult calls to keep everyone safe. Their communication was fantastic, and we have wonderful staff, so thank you so much.
We have Access Delaware, I think that's all been wound up now, and so I think at some point we need to talk about what to do next, whether it's do something, do nothing, but I think we need to wind that up, and personally, I'm shooting for something spring of next year, but that's my, that's my question.
Only a topic of interest at this point, not that it's a, a problem today, but it very well could be in the future, and I would like to see us get ahead of it as opposed to waiting for something to happen, and that's the electric scooters, like what they're seeing down in Columbus. Obviously, I know we don't, you know, we, we don't allow supposedly bicycles and skateboards downtown, and with our congested sidewalks, obviously, I would hate to see then somebody using one of those e-scooters or whatever they are. But I think it's something that, that we need to put on our plate and just consider before it becomes an issue, so that's all I got.
The only thing I have, Tom, I'll be attending the MRC meeting this Thursday, I believe, downtown Columbus. With that, if there's nothing else, I'll indicate a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.